Okay, it says going on.
While you're transitioning, my phone call was Andy Barr when you heard my phone ringing.
Oh.
I was like, I should have answered that one.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the call right, I mean, I've done it before. It's kind of interesting, but yeah.
Okay. We are live.
Okay, Steven, you have me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I've got the agenda laid out in front of you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, we'll give it a couple more minutes, Matt. What time have we got right now? Got to, we'll give it a couple more minutes to get going.
Okay. Okay, Steven, you have me? I can hear you. Okay, I've got the agenda laid out in front of you.
Give it a couple more minutes. All right, who's watching, who's watching YouTube with the mute off? Is that you, Jason?
That's Jason.
Yeah, it's definitely, just look at that grin. He knows it's him too, look.
With that muted on, I'm hearing the echo. Thank you.
Yeah, if anyone's watching YouTube, it's gonna stream it kind of on a separate computer, just make sure you turn off the, the sound. And also make sure you've got the bandwidth for it too, because it will affect your video performance.
It's a few seconds behind. I guess they're giving me a dump button in case anybody says anything.
Might come in handy. Yeah, we're gonna get spoiled doing this, guys.
I know we will, won't we? True.
So you all don't miss out on this food?
Not gonna lie, that sounds really good right now. Maybe tonight was meatloaf night, we're missing it.
Yeah. Probably for great, uh, apple cake or something caramel icing.
All right, guys, it's six thirty. Let's go ahead and get started here. I'd like to welcome everyone to the, uh, this unusual and, uh, innovative way we're gonna conduct the regular March meeting for the Jessman County Board of Education. Due to the governor's orders and recommendations from the CDC, we're conducting this meeting virtually. Um, we've got all of our board members, uh, online here, and we're gonna get going. Uh, Mr. Moore, would you, uh, call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Board Chair Stevens Crivener?
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams?
Here.
Board Member Amy Day?
Here.
Deborah Hood?
Here.
Bobby Welsh? We have, uh, five present. We have a quorum.
Okay, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Downing, our board attorney, is gonna help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
To fly on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement, Jessman County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. Uh, let's keep that in mind. That's, uh, what guides us in our decisions tonight. Um, we're gonna have one change to the agenda. Is that right, Mr. Moore? We're adding an action item, uh, which is a resolution that authorizes the board, uh, to utilize more innovative means for meeting, uh, during this, uh, difficult time where we're dealing with the, uh, coronavirus.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let's add that under, um, under the approval of the agenda. And so what I'll do now is I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of that item, uh, which we will then, uh, take up, uh, as soon as we've approved the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay. The agenda is approved, five oh. Okay, so the resolution, uh, Mr. Downing has drawn up for us. Uh, I'm not gonna read this thing, it's rather lengthy. Um, but basically on, uh, March the sixth, Governor Andy Beshear declared a state of emergency pursuant to his powers under the Kentucky Constitution and KRS Chapter thirty-nine A regarding threats to the public health presented by the novel coronavirus COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, so basically what we're gonna do is, uh, is utilize, uh, technologies like we are now to make sure that, uh, the Board of Education can continue conducting the, uh, the district's business, uh, while also, uh, aligning ourselves with the recommendation from Governor Beshear. Uh, do we have any questions or comments about this resolution?
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution as written.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All right, motion passes, uh, five to zero. Um, approval of the board meeting minutes from our February the twenty-fourth and our, uh, regular meeting and our March the sixteen special called meeting. I'll give everyone just a few seconds to look over that. Should have already done so, but, uh, browse it again and make sure there's no, uh, issues or changes we need to make to those meetings, to those minutes, excuse me. Any changes, any corrections? All right, can I get a motion to approve the board minutes, uh, for both minute, for both meetings?
I move that we adopt, that we adopt the, uh, board meeting minutes for February twenty-fourth and March sixteenth to twenty.
Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes from those two meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? All right, minutes have been adopted. All right, Mr. Moore, uh, Communication Section, uh, you're up to bat.
Okay, and I'm just gonna tell you, I'm taking notes on, uh, on every meeting, so I'll make sure all of that gets to Teresa.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Uh, under, um, achievements and recognitions, I do just want to take a moment to, uh, say thank you uh, to all of our food service workers, uh, Family Resource Center, uh, coordinators, and all the volunteers throughout the community, all of our staff that has volunteered, because I really do feel like they've done an exceptional job to make some major adjustments. Um, just a one exciting piece of data for you, uh, meals served last week, that was six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine.
Wow.
Say that again?
Uh, it was, uh,
Six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, okay.
I'm gonna make that, make that quickly, it's just phenomenal. Uh, the Resource Center has, uh, developed a, uh, very comprehensive plan to make sure that, uh, every phone call that comes in, every email, they've got a system for tracking those individuals to make sure that they're, uh, meeting their hygiene needs, uh, uh, clothing needs, um, uh, food needs, and they're, and they're connecting them with the right resources. So again, we've had some, uh, people just do exceptional jobs to make sure we're meeting the basic needs of our families and the students.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Uh, I tried to reach out to Shani Marcus because I had some things that I wanted to give to maybe the homeless children as far as clothes and that thing, and I can't, her number, I can't get through to her. So I didn't know if there was a different way to do that.
Okay, I can reach out to her and have her, uh, get in contact with you.
That'd be great.
But what we're doing with clothing, I'll go ahead and tell you, is really so that we don't, aren't trying to figure out how that whole system works. We're actually encouraging people, uh, to donate to the, uh, existing places that take clothing, such as Will and Southland, because they really do have more of a system for displaying that and, and kind of coordinating all of that. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna help get the resources to them, but not necessarily set up, uh, any kind of system like that within the, the school for the clothing.
Okay.
But I'll have her definitely get in touch with you.
Okey dokey.
All right, and I, I don't want to forget to also thank, uh, our, uh, Technology Director and, and everyone that, uh, works in the Technology Department. They've done an exceptional job behind the scenes, making all of the systems and structures to include this meeting, uh, work, a lot of NTI initiatives, so a big shout out to them. All of our, uh, teachers that are involved in the non-traditional instructional days, uh, they are, uh, going above and beyond to make sure we have a quality instruction for the students and just so proud of everything that they're doing. And then, last but not least, uh, definitely to our school administrators and central office administrators, uh, they are constantly, uh, thinking ahead and making sure that we're doing, uh, what we need to do to be prepared, uh, for, uh, everything that could come our way. So again, a lot to celebrate and, uh, I appreciate everyone's work as we move forward. And then, I just love the fact, uh, that the board has been connected to this, uh, our approving the summer feeding program, uh, in years past, as well as the non-traditional instructional days, have just really helped us, uh, to be able to be, uh, much more flexible maybe than we would have been without, uh, these resources and, uh, these practices that have currently existed in Jessman County. I, I did want to just run briefly over a couple of things, uh, related to the actions that, um, have been taken lately, uh, regarding, uh, the coronavirus. Uh, first, uh, I'm sure that you guys are well aware, uh, non-traditional instructional days will be going until April twentieth. That's, uh, the soonest we will be returning, uh, and I do appreciate the board giving us that flexibility, the school system, and me the flexibility to extend that if necessary. Uh, I am gonna continue to follow the guidance of the governor, and, uh, if he, uh, recommends additional days, it's be extended, then, uh, that'll be the practice that I'll bring before the board. I'd mentioned to the board in the work session that, uh, we met, um, Central Office with Office of Teaching and Learning, and really are transitioning our, uh, non-traditional instructional days, uh, into, uh, uh, a more organized system that is gonna have, um, a, a focus on, uh, progress, on, uh, the standards as well as, uh, making sure that the students are earning, uh, the credits that they need at the high school level. I think, uh, the students will start seeing here pretty quickly that there will be other opportunities for them, such as, um, connecting with their teachers through Google Hangout, uh, uh, Google Classroom and, uh, Zoom meetings. So we're getting much more, uh, creative so that, uh, we can put, uh, teachers, uh, directly communicating, uh, or instructing our students. Um, we are making adjustments, uh, to try to keep separation, uh, of, of our employees. So we will, as of Wednesday, reduce our central office hours from nine to eleven. Uh, that information's being posted throughout, so everyone knows. And then, uh, schools are also posting their hours, uh, on their doors and, uh, through social, social media and newsletters. Uh, all of the phones are being, uh, routed or can be accessed, uh, from somebody off-campus if necessary. And we've also coordinated, uh, mail and, and deliveries into the, uh, uh, school system so that, uh, we can continue to operate as needed. We are working with the Emergency Management System, particularly, uh, Donnie Adams, and we'll have a testing site for the coronavirus, uh, that's gonna be set up behind Warner. I don't know when, uh, that'll start, that, that will be, I'm sure, the guidance is moving, uh, to us at a later date. But we are, uh, supporting that e- effort during these times. I do want you guys to also know, hopefully you've seen, uh, some of this, but we are trying to be very strategic in communicating to our families, uh, as well as, uh, our staff, trying to keep them informed as, uh, each decision is made. So, uh, you can continue to see that. And, uh, we did add, uh, last week, the hashtag Jessman County Schools, uh, NTI, and are seeing a lot of, uh, really positive messages from, uh, the community regarding the students working on their NTI packets and work, as well as, uh, some good celebrations of neighbors, helping neighbors, uh, throughout our community. So thank you everyone for all of that. Uh, Denise, you had asked me, um, about, uh, some of the budget, uh, implications. And I, I did want to let you know that the board, our Kentucky Department of Education, uh, has recommended, uh, to our legislators that they establish the sinking allocation for ne- the SIC allocation for next year by utilizing last year's, uh, ADA. So, uh, we're hopeful that that goes through. And then they're also exploring options for transportation, because, uh, as you know, that's a re- reimbursement models. If you're not transporting students, you're not generating those revenues. So they're looking for, uh, some type of a way to, uh, uh, address that issue. And what I heard today from, uh, the commissioner is that they like the solution that they're talking about with SIC, so they'll probably recommend something similar for transportation. And then, this is a federal level, but I also know that, uh, the governor has requested that federal programs, our title dollars, our IDA dollars, all of those types of funds, uh, be extended. Typically, you have a, a deadline on when tho- those dollars have to be, uh, spent, but they're, uh, requesting waiver to potentially, uh, move that timeline out. And then, the only other one that's connected to budget that's on my radar, that's a bigger item, is Medicaid. We do a lot of reimbursement, and if we're not, uh, providing those services, we don't have the ability to request, uh, the reimbursement for that. And that pays for a lot of our staff to be able to implement the services that we have. So I anticipate we may see re- some relief there, because I'm certain that every school district, uh, in Kentucky is in a similar situation. But I think those were the big items. And do you have any other questions? Does any, the board have any other questions for me?
I don't, Matt. Um, I, I, I think that's a very comprehensive update and I appreciate it. Anyone else on the board, uh, have a question or comment for Matt on that?
No, I don't.
No.
Okay.
And, uh, only other thing I was gonna say to just put it on your radar is we may, uh, in our next meeting or in a future meeting, need to, uh, talk about, if it is approved, uh, potential emergency days, additional emergency days, uh, for our employees. I think when that time comes, if legislation approves that, uh, I'll be able to give you some recommendations. But, uh, again, I just wanted to put that on your radar.
Before you go too far in the agenda, there are a couple of construction update items in their Supporting Documents folder from the two architects.
Okay. Are you gonna cover those?
I can't, I can't cover them. If you want, um, you'll see them if you go to Supporting Documents. I'm trying to look where you are, Matt, as you scroll through your drive, but.
And, uh, Val, Bobby just said it, if you want, they can just review those and ask any questions?
Now, that's what I would have said, is just go ahead and review them and look over them. If you have any questions, to reach out to me, but do know that they're on full, um, both, uh, both sites, both, uh, construction projects are on full, uh, manpower, so they're, they're working full strength.
Awesome, okay.
Matt, what I'm seeing right now, Val, um, they, they're still showing the substantial completion date for the Providence School is April the sixth.
That's right.
They're, they're showing twenty nineteen. I'm gonna assume they mean twenty twenty.
That is correct, and that is what they're telling us, but I'm gonna be shocked if they hit it, but I do think they'll be within a couple of weeks of it.
Okay, well, um, okay, yeah, absolutely. And Matt, you, you might wanna put that on, on the, uh, on the list of items we can discuss. Maybe that next, next work session we're gonna have in a couple of weeks is, um, you know, issues related to the Providence School and kind of, uh, you know, make goods and things like that, we might wanna discuss.
Absolutely, yeah, good idea, thank you. And that's all I had to cover.
Okay, uh, any board member of Communications tonight? Uh, anybody got anything they wanna share? Is that, is that Denise or Debbie talking?
That's Amy.
Oh, Amy. Amy, can we get a, uh, get her a little bit closer to a microphone, just so everyone can hear her?
Um, I just question the, our town kid had donated a thousand dollars to the twenty-twenty, supplies of twenty-twenty, um,
Senior trip?
And if they don't, if they aren't able to take that, um, I don't know what that would be, be served for as far as maybe the project graduation, but, uh, or what that can be utilized, even though it's specified for one thing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm guessing we would have to go back to them and get permission to use it for something else, right?
Yeah.
Use it some way for them. Make a bomb, you know, that's, uh, to continue to count their vacation for their senior trip.
Okay, good idea, definitely, thank you.
Any, anyone else? I, I'd like to just take a second and, um, and, and express gratitude for my fellow board members. I know at least two or three of them have been involved, um, in distributing meals over the past couple of weeks. Um, I know Debbie for sure, I believe Denise and Amy both, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, I, I just wanna say thank you to, to, to all of you for helping, uh, and all the board members in general, um, ha- have been very, um, supportive during, uh, kind of this, this difficult time that everyone's dealing with, um, no one's ever experienced anything like this. Um, I know that the administration, I think you guys are doing a great job keeping our families up to date and, and keeping the board, you know, in the loop of what's going on and, and basically keeping kids first. So, uh, I just wanna say that.
Yep, and I, I, uh, agree completely, appreciate everything the board's done to give us, uh, uh, the flexibility and help us, uh, develop some creative ideas to make sure we're meeting our students' needs.
All right, um, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, we've got thirty-three items in Consent Agenda. Um, we've all had a chance to review this ahead of time, uh, but I'll go ahead and open it up. If anyone's got any questions or comments or needs additional information, uh, from Matt and his team on any of these items?
I will tell you while you're looking, uh, we did add the food service grant, uh, that we talked to you about in the last work session, which is connected to the mobile box.
Yay!
So, uh,
Yeah.
That's been submitted, and then.
Was it submitted today?
I, I think, no, it was already submitted.
Oh, okay.
This was one, we had a short timeline, so we had to, uh, uh, submit it a little bit earlier, uh, than communicated it. And then you see there also, uh, Item Twenty-two, we received a COPIA grant for sources of strength for East Jessman High School. And before, uh, we moved into our NTI days, there were a lot of exciting things happening with that. So we're so glad that, uh, that program has come in and COPIA's been able to help us with it.
Absolutely. Um, do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
All right, I'll second that motion. Um, all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? All right, and that brings us to the Action Item, Section G of the agenda. Um, Matt, you wanna just give us a, a, a brief overview of Item G one?
Uh, yes, sir, this is, uh, for, uh, two separate policies, and it is, uh, approving the second reading, uh, for the revision, and these are the policies that are connected to, uh, school attendance areas. And what we are doing here is trying to merely align, uh, the policies with our practice for, uh, tuition, uh, charges for, uh, full-time permanent employees. So it's my recommendation that you approve the second reading.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
Bobby made a motion?
Second.
Oh, Debbie will second it. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? All right, Matt, Item G two?
Uh, yes, uh, the next five items are all connected to, uh, the gymnasium floor, uh, for West Jessman High School. As we discussed in our, uh, last work session, uh, there's some safety issues with that gymnasium floor with its splintering, because it's been sanded, uh, multiple times, and the tongue and groove piece are starting to separate. So we've tried to repair it, but feel like, uh, it really is at the point. And architects have advised as well that, uh, we go ahead and replace it. So, uh, Action Item Number Two is that first step in allowing, uh, our requesting from the Kentucky Department of Education that we make minor changes to the district facility plan. So it's my recommendation that you allow us to submit this to Amy.
Uh, are the board members okay if we lump Items G two through G six into one vote?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Items G two through G six?
Make a motion to approve G two through two, G six.
Steve, Steven, uh, Howard is recommending that we do these, uh, one at a time.
Sure, okay, no problem. Let's, let's make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's. Uh, Debbie makes a motion to approve Item G two. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose say no? All right, motion carries five zero. I'll make a motion to approve Item G three.
Second.
I think I heard a second from Debbie. Did Bobby beat her to it, Matt?
Bobby beat her.
All right, uh, all those in favor of approving Item G three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Item G three approved, five to zero. Um, I'll make a motion to approve Item G four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving Item G four? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose say no? Our motion passes five zero. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve Item G five.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? And finally, I'll make a motion to approve Item G six.
Second.
All right. A- A- Amy from the back row, right?
Right.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose say no? All right, uh, motion carries five zero. Um, so that brings us to Item G seven, Matt, out-of-state, uh, trips. Uh, I know at our special called meeting on, what day was it, March eleventh? When did we meet? I can't even remember honestly. March sixteenth? Was it a week ago?
Yes.
Um, we postponed or canceled all trips up through April the third, which was the last day of spring break. Uh, you wanna give us an updated recommendation here?
Uh, yes, we, uh, only have five remaining out-of-state trips, and there are three that are coming up pretty soon. Um, and that's, uh, our, uh, DC trip for East Middle, which is scheduled for April fifteenth. We have a senior trip scheduled for April twenty-second. And we have another, um, eighth grade trip for West Middle, uh, which is scheduled for April twenty-sixth. And then finally, a JCTC Deca trip for April twenty-ninth. So it would be my recommendation that we cancel the dates for those trips and explore, uh, the possibilities for rescheduling at a later date or, uh, trying to get, uh, reimbursed in some way for those trips.
Yeah, Matt, what I would recommend is that we officially cancel the trip now.
Yes.
Um, and so that that can trigger whatever it needs to trigger with regard to the travel company. Um, and, and then providing refunds, uh, to anyone who would like to go ahead and request it. Um, and then, you know, let the principals at each school work with the travel companies to make other arrangements and then offer those back out to students, almost basically starting over. Is that, is that kind of what we're go- what we're going for here?
I believe so.
Okay, is that, does that sound reasonable to all, to all the other board members?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think the sooner people, I think the sooner that's, that decision is made,
the easier it is for families to make the plan.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion, we approve Item G seven.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Motion passes five zero.
Uh, Bobby just made a motion to go into, uh, executive session.
I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion to go into closed session at six fifty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? All right, we'll enter closed session. Got, do we need a motion to exit closed session, Howard?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to exit closed session at seven oh seven. Alright, I'll make a motion to exit closed session at 7:07?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Alright, we're out of closed session. And then Bobby, do you wanna give us the motion to adjourn at 7:08? Alright, I'll second his motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, guys. Aaron, good job, thank you so much. Good seeing all you guys. Hope everyone's staying healthy and isn't going stir-crazy.
Thank you.
Alright, bye.
Bye. Bye.